Good evening. This is, tonight's meeting is the committee of the whole. And I would like to start by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
City council members, Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson? Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
That was Eric.
Jacobson?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the previous meeting from June 10th, 2019.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. Any corrections or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Additions to the agenda. We have some requests tonight to move a couple of items. The first request is to move ordinance number 2019-06036 to number seven. So that would be switching the resolution number 2019-06025R. The second request is to move public input, specifically to put public input next to the resolution and the ordinance for those who are interested in speaking about those items, for general public input to be done after the ordinances and the resolutions. So those are the two items on the agenda that have been requested to be moved. Do I have a motion for that?
I move for it to change.
I'll second it.
Moved by Cherie, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So those changes have been made. Correct me if I get them out of order, please. All right. So we are going to not do, I'm going to do the public input, actually, for people who don't want, wish to speak. So I have something from Bishop King James and Reverend Bishop Underwood, who is, would like to put into the record that they are, I'm going to say concerned, that word isn't on here, concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issue, sewer problems. All right. All right, the others are, one other person, and I apologize, I'm not going to say your name correctly, Osama Sawadigo? Okay, thank you. The topic is for the CU Fair, and do you wish to speak, sir, at the time of the item, or do you just wish to say you're in support?
I just wish to say that I'm in support.
Okay. So you're in support of CU Fair's activities and like that entered. All right. Thank you very much. So presentations. I know that Brandon has something with the ordinance, but are there any other presentations tonight? No? Any staff reports? All right. Seeing none, let's start off with ordinance number 2019-06036, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with the Markinson Affiliates LLC for the Urbana Landmark Hotel Mayor?
I'll start this off.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to just comment that in the past, I did recuse myself from commenting on this project because I had met with a group in my neighborhood who had another idea for the use of the hotel. But since the development of this agreement and the approval by the council of the RIO, ROI?
LOI.
LOI, thank you. I didn't look at my notes. That group has basically disbanded, has had no more meetings or conversations, and so I feel like I'm freed from that restriction.
All right. Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to begin this discussion with a statement. My staff and I are proud to bring the ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Markinson's Affiliates LLC to you for consideration. This agreement represents a major milestone after years of efforts and months of negotiation to achieve renovation and reopening of our downtown historic hotel. This agreement also addresses some of the shortcomings, well, addresses the shortcomings that were identified in previous negotiation attempts with other potential developers. Based on analysis and research over the past years, we've concluded that the highest and best use of this property is for a high-quality boutique, full-service hotel with active meeting and conference space. It's clear that long-term success also depends upon affiliation with a known hospitality brand. Renovating the hotel will generate the most benefit for our community in terms of tax revenue and long-term activation of the site, and this is very important when considering the necessary public investment. I strongly believe that the proposal before you tonight will be the first step in the transformation of the entire Lincoln Square site in the heart of our downtown. City staff and I have spent hundreds of hours engaging potential buyers and developers with the goal of partnering with a team that can renovate, restore, and operate this property in a way that our community deserves. So I'd like to thank Mr. Sam Spiratos and his team, and they're here with us tonight, for seeing the potential in this property. It's not for the faint of heart, we all know that. Markinson's Affiliates have demonstrated they have the vision, experience, financial resources, and patience, tenacity, and commitment to transparency necessary to move this project forward, and we're very excited for the future. I'm also grateful for the leadership by city staff. Our team included city administrator Carol Mitten, economic development manager Brandon Boyes, and Will Kolchowski, finance director Elizabeth Hannan, community development services director John Schneider, with support from our legal department, Jim Simon in particular, planning and zoning and public works. In fact, every department in the city has had a hand in getting us to the point that we're at tonight, and I'm very thankful for their efforts. These individuals have been working tirelessly over the past two years to reach this point, and frankly, it's longer than that, but it's two years on this, that I've been involved at this level. And finally, I'd like to thank the community for their continuing interest, concern, and support for envisioning a new life for this hotel. The original opening day for the Urbana-Lincoln Hotel was in January of 1924, so we're certainly looking forward to celebrating the next 100 years, and we're excited to get started. So I'll turn this over to Brandon, and he'll present some of the technical, he and Will Kolchowski will be presenting the technical aspects of this project.
Thank you. So council has asked to consider an ordinance?
Could you turn your microphone on?
Is it on? I'll get a little closer.
Move it closer.
Does that sound better? So council has asked to consider a redevelopment agreement, which is exhibited in the ordinance. This agreement would be with Markinson's Affiliates, and it would result in the renovation of the Urbana Landmark Hotel into a tapestry collection by Hilton Brandon Hotel and Conference Center. The redevelopment agreement that's presented to council is consistent with the interim agreement and letter of intent that this body and the mayor previously entered into with Markinson's Affiliates. The developer's proposal is for a minimum of $15.1 million project, and as the mayor mentioned, we have representatives here tonight. We have Sam Spiratos from Markinson's Affiliates, Mike Orloff of the Stroud Group, and they are the project co-leads, Elliot Estes of Woodmont Lodging, and Michael Blank of Woodmont Lodging, who are performing asset management, Stephen Siegel of Hotel Construction Project Management, HCPM, and Jerry Krips of K2M Architecture. And so we'll hear from them in just a moment. The city engaged three consultants, Ken Beth, our TIF attorney, who's here this evening as well, if you have any questions for him. Paytech Hospitality, who had previously conducted a market study and a review of former proposals, has returned to review this concept, and SB Friedman Development Advisors also conducted a review of the deal. Paytech Hospitality's research was looking at the available hotel market data, as well as the team and the pro forma information that was submitted by the developer. She found that the team was well-qualified, that the pro forma was within industry standards, and that the market assumptions were reasonable, although there is some new competition expected in the market, as there are currently not any upscale products of the type being proposed for this project, but there are two proposals in Champaign for similar upscale brands. SB Friedman, their review, was focused on the finances of the developer, and they found that the city's currently-proposed level of support at five and a half million for the project would allow the project to generate above-market returns, and while also acknowledging that a higher rate of return is not unreasonable, given the limited recent development in downtown Urbana, and Champaign-Urbana's status as a small metropolitan market. We would be considered a secondary market, some would say we are a tertiary market. I want to turn things over to Will Kolchowski, management analyst for the city. He conducted a review of the project revenues that were reviewed by both Paytech Consulting and SB Friedman to arrive at the justification for the level of support being shown in the five and a half million dollar bond. And then he'll also talk about a sensitivity analysis, which was the internal method we used to assess our risk.
Thanks, Brandon. So on your memos, what I'm going to go over kind of starts on page four, talking about the bond analysis. And I guess, you know, the first step of figuring out how much can the city afford in terms of give, you know, what value incentive can we provide, based off the developer's request, the timing, the amount, we're really going off of a bonding scenario. And so when it comes to issuing a bond, from the city's perspective, our city finance department believes that a 10-year private placement bond is the maximum term that we would be able to sell. So that's kind of, gives us kind of the term limit for the amount of time that the bond could be. So going from there, the next step is how much revenue is generated during that time period. So for this project, there'd be four main revenue sources. So you have your TIF increment, your property tax, you have your food and beverage tax, which is based off of food sales, and then you have your hotel tax, which is based off of room sales. And then the fourth component, it would be a to-be-created boutique hotel tax, and this rate would be variable, and we could set it basically between zero and what we believe is 6% is kind of the max rate we would want to charge. That would put us, I think, at the top of the state as far as overall hotel tax rate, or at least right behind Chicago. So I think as far as the boutique tax goes, between zero and 6%. So you kind of add all that up, and you kind of get the total amount of revenues that this project will generate. And then, again, the boutique tax is variable, you can toggle it to kind of change the total amount, the tax revenue the project will generate. And so when you do that, then, you know, there's also risk to lending, so how do we incorporate that? So we apply what's called a debt service coverage ratio, and that's, essentially, that is for every dollar that the project generates, there has to be, so every dollar bond payment there is, there is $1.2 that the project generates, and that kind of counts for blanket top-level risk. So then the kind of table you'll see here is the $5.2 million bond scenario, and how much revenue would that generate, with the idea being that the boutique hotel tax is variable, so that the total revenues equals the amount of bond payments over the 10-year period. And then you'll have the $5.5 million bond that you're being asked to be considered here, just for comparison. So you see the property tax, the food and beverage tax, and the hotel motel tax, those are all the same regardless, and then you get the variable boutique tax, you apply the debt coverage ratio, and then that's the revenues that will support the bond payments for this, our projections. Are there any quick questions about that?
Are there any questions for Will?
Okay. Moving on. So then, you know, that kind of gives you the basic amount of how much we can afford. So for a $5.5 million bond, we would, can afford, the revenues from the project would be sufficient to cover the bond payments with a 4% boutique tax, whereas for a $5.2 million bond, it would need to be 3%. So, you know, I was talking about the debt coverage ratio, that's kind of a blanket measure that you use to assess risk, but, you know, we also looked at some particular scenarios that we thought might be likely to occur, to see how that would affect the bond payments, and see if that would change anything significantly. So we ran a sensitivity analysis for a few different scenarios, and the four main scenarios that you'll see are, one is if we win the Carl case, so if we win the Carl court case in our favor, the amount of tax rate that we would charge to, or all the taxing bodies would charge to get the same levy would be lower as those properties came to tax rolls, which I think everybody, mostly in the city, would be very happy about, since the property taxes are used to finance this, this actually has a negative impact on our ability to issue a bond amount. And then another scenario is if the assessed value is lower than what we're projecting. We had a couple of different ways of kind of forecasting what we thought the final assessed value was. The developer had their ways of projecting it, we all kind of got a similar number, but you don't really know until it's done, so we ran that scenario. And then you have a couple revenue scenarios where you're looking at perhaps if the revenues are from the average daily rate, which is the room rates are a little bit lower than what they expect they can get, and then perhaps if occupancy rate is a little bit lower. So just kind of going from the table to kind of left to right, so the first scenario is if the court case were decided in our favor, you know, the assumption is that, you know, at the most, the total tax rate would go down by about two points, so instead of 10.33, excuse me, it would be 8.33. So the change in project revenue from that would come from the TIF district, and the total over 10-year period, there would be a decrease in about $600,000 of tax revenue. Compare that, however, to the revenue that we discounted off the top for the debt coverage ratio, you'll see that's well within our variability and our risk tolerance there. And then the next column you'll see is the new boutique tax, so I was talking that we think we can charge up to 6% boutique tax. So when we start at 4%, we always have the option to increase it later to generate more revenue. So you have a secondary cushion that you can charge to add to cover any shortfall. And the last column you'll see is just the total balance or shortfall. So in the scenario where we win the Carl case, even though the property tax goes down, it's well within covered in the debt coverage ratio, and the revenues would be sufficient to cover all the bond payments. So then just moving down the list, for the property value, same thing, you know, the assumption is that'd be about $2, the assessed value would be about $2 million less. The change in project revenue is a little bit higher, but again, you're well within the debt coverage ratio, and you wouldn't need to increase the boutique tax. Sorry, this first table is for the $5.2 million and a 3% boutique tax. And then third scenario is a reduced average daily room rate. So in the Paytech analysis, she found overall that the room rates they expect to get are reasonable based off the product and the market, however, it's a little bit higher than what's charged in the market now, so the assumption we ran just in the sensitivity analysis is that whatever the market is bearing now is kind of a bit of a ceiling. But even in that scenario, you know, there's, the change in project revenue is about $400,000 less, it's still covered by the debt coverage ratio. And then the fourth scenario is, you know, I'm thinking about if the market becomes oversaturated with some of these new hotels that are proposed. So there's a, in the Paytech analysis, there's a market segment, which is about, I think, somewhere around the realms of 800 rooms, kind of the mid-tier to upper-tier segment currently in our market. And if all the hotels currently built, were built, I think it'd be about 400 extra rooms. So assuming that all those rooms were added to the supply of this particular market, but there is relatively little new demand, which is, I think, you know, just a generous assumption, but if there's very little demand, we just applied what the overall occupancy rate in the market would be. It's currently about 70%, so if you add all the rooms with little demand, it'd be about 56%. So even in that scenario where everything gets built and there's not really the new demand to back it, you know, the change in revenues, the change in property, sorry, tax revenues at least, is about 3/4 of a million dollars over a 10-year period, and again, that's still covered by the debt coverage ratio. And then, those are the kind of the four main scenarios we looked at, and then you get some combinations of both property tax scenarios, the Carl and the assessed value, and both revenue scenarios. When you do both scenarios, any two, that's about the amount that the debt coverage ratio allows us, and then with the increase in boutique tax, though, you're still covered. And then even in those scenarios, the project generates enough revenues to cover bond payments. And then the last scenario is a combination of all scenarios for the $5.2 million bond and 3.0% hotel tax, and even if all these scenarios go bad, the project just about balances out where it's generating just enough revenues to cover all the payments. So the table below, then, is 5.5 million, and starting off with a 4.0 boutique tax. And generally speaking, the results are the same, although diminished. So your ability to increase the boutique tax is diminished, since you're starting at a higher point, and because the tax is higher rate, the effect on the revenue assumption, so the occupancy rate and the revenues, it becomes a little bit larger in the magnitude effect. And you'll see, for any single scenario, the debt coverage ratio is enough to cover this shortfall. In the combination scenarios, of just two combinations, the debt coverage ratio is about equal, where you'd probably want to add the boutique tax, and then, but if all these scenarios go wrong, that's where the project no longer generates enough revenue to cover all the bond payments, so.
In a 10-year period.
In a 10-year period. So over a 10-year period, the deficit is about $250,000, according to this analysis, and the revenues generated in year 11 post-bond are about $900,000. So it's about, you know, the payback period, essentially, in this scenario is just about one year less. And this is kind of where staff identified as kind of the upper limit where, you know, we can afford. So all these scenarios, you know, you don't have to be too creative on the effect of these happenings, you don't have to dream up some terrible thing happening. I mean, I want to call them, you know, not low-hanging fruit, but I think, you know, they're all possible, so, but it takes a combination of them at this point to get down to where the revenues are not generating over a 10-year period to pay back the bond payment. And then if you go higher, what you see is your ability to add the boutique tax, sorry, boutique hotel tax, you know, it gets progressively towards zero, you can't add any later, so you only have the debt coverage ratio, and then it really only takes a combination of two things going wrong, where then at that point, the revenues are no longer sufficient.
Does anyone have questions for Will on that aspect of the analysis, or should we continue with the presentation? Just factual questions? We want to hold the discussion.
Factual questions for staff. I think we'll take staff questions after. Are you guys done with your presentation?
A little bit more.
A little bit more, okay. All right. Why don't we continue and then take questions at the, is that okay, Dennis?
And this has, it's germane to just what he talked about.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, Dennis.
So, appreciate your analysis. One of the other things that has been discussed in the public media is our economic status as a nation and the potential for a recession if some of the tariff issues are not resolved properly and whatever, you know, in the national level. If this, if the nation or if the community went into a recessive period, would this endanger our balance ultimately, in a more difficult manner?
So I would say, yeah. The place you would probably see that show up is in the revenue assumptions, where the average daily rate and, you know, maybe the occupancy rate. So, you know, the reason why we chose those numbers there are just based off some stuff in, you know, the market studies that say maybe, you know, if things don't go well, that'd be it. But, I mean, they can be lower for other reasons as well, including a recession, so that, I mean, it shows that revenues can be lower, whether it's, you know, the market doesn't support those room rates, or there's a recession, you know, you can insert really the reason why that change occurs, but, you know, based off this order to magnitude, the revenues would still be sufficient to cover the payments.
So our assumptions were also reviewed by SB Friedman, and of course, the proposed material, so specifically the preliminary financial review of the developer's proposal, including the project budget, the sources and uses, the pro forma, how the debt was being handled. And SB Friedman found that the city's support at five and a half million would generate above-market returns, but again, we're acknowledging that this is a, we have a secondary market, and this is a risky property. We've had a lot of different developers look at this property, and we believe we're bringing the most qualified group to the council for consideration, and that this proposal meets the highest and best use that we can identify for the project. So the alternatives analysis is the other, if we could.
So then, you know, when you're looking at what are the financial costs of the city, we also looked at the opportunity costs to the city. So, and to look at kind of the opportunity costs of this development, we kind of did an alternative analysis scenario to look at that, kind of look at two different things. So the first thing we looked at was economic, the economic impact of alternative uses. It's the last page. But, you know, there's a lot of numbers, but the, kind of the main result of, I think it's exhibit G, has all the information, but there are kind of two parts of this analysis, the alternative development scenario. So we looked at kind of a couple of different scenarios, what we thought could be potential adaptive reuses. One, the current proposed project, senior living, student living, as well as kind of a community-oriented use. So for an input-output model, kind of predicts the overall economic impacts across the whole sector, and kind of what the results show is that of, you know, all the things we looked at, you know, a hotel has by far the most significant economic impact in terms of the particular model, the software we used, outputs jobs, earnings, and local new taxes of those, you know, those aren't, we know the local tax figures aren't correct, but it kind of shows the order of magnitude. So, you know, renovated hotel has by far the highest economic impact on a direct effect to the sector, but when you look at the economic impact of the guests as well, you know, there's one study that I quoted that showed for every $1 spent on lodging, you get about $2 and $21 spent by the guest outside of the hotel. So when they're stabilized, room revenues are, year three are $5 million, you know, the potential economic impact is that they're spending, you know, the guests are spending $10 million in Urbana, so, I mean, you have that as well. So kind of from that analysis, they're kind of showing that the renovated hotel has the highest economic impact, you look at, well, what is the most feasible hotel development on the site? And, you know, the analysis that we did that shows that a renovation of the hotel into a boutique hotel, or a kind of upscale hotel, is the most developmentally feasible option. From a, there's costs that are going to have to be incurred regardless of what type of hotel you have, so the higher-end hotel, the better from that regard. And as with regard to new construction, generally speaking, new construction is more expensive than renovation on principle, but in this particular scenario, you'd also have to demolish, for a new hotel, you'd have to then demolish the hotel and then repair the facade to the attached structure, and that, you know, if there's a development gap now, that just increases by those costs for any new construction scenario, which makes it even less likely to occur. And that's kind of the main point there, is that renovation is the highest economic impact for the site and the most developmentally feasible outcome as well.
It also, any demolition would take away historic tax credits, which are an important part of our developer's proposal here, as well as really any other developer who's looked at the site. There is a scenario in there called site prep, which looks at what it would cost the city, essentially, to, a very rough estimate, buy the hotel and tear it down and turn it into a parking lot, and we're looking at about $5.6 million. So just want to emphasize, we have looked thoroughly at the alternatives. Not only is, you know, this a proposal that a private entity has come to us wanting to make a major investment in our community, but we also believe it's the highest and best use for our downtown, and the strongest move for our downtown economy. I'm going to go over the, just agreement very briefly, just that the updated numbers, as well as explained, have gone from $5.2 to $5.5 million, and that's largely because of the increase in the hotel motel tax starting point. The minimum project cost was reduced to 15.1 because we removed the contingency, and you can see a breakout of that, I think it's in the developer's proposal, on the project budget, it clearly shows that the prior number we used was inclusive of contingency. So we want to honor the minimum estimate of the developer. The equity's been reduced to 19.6 from 20%. This is largely because of the city's increased level of support, and there are some remaining adjustments to this language and this agreement that we'll work to bring to the council before its next meeting. The agreement includes the requirement we've included in our last two development agreements to set aspirational goals for the hiring of women and minority-owned businesses on the project itself, and we would intend to retain a consultant to work with the developer in that regard, to set those and report those aspirational goals. And the agreement now clearly commits the developer to maintain a tapestry brand for a period of 10 years. The city has the option under the agreement to establish that boutique hotel motel tax, and again, the assumption right now of 4% is only an estimate. The city has, retains the ability to adjust that as needed, and we certainly don't want to introduce taxes that aren't necessary to meet our financial goals for the project. Again, adjustment to the agreement from how it's presented today, smaller adjustments are expected. But just to be clear, that even the fully executed agreement does not guarantee the project. The developer retains the right to continue to assess their risk and the financial performance of this project, and the agreement does not obligate them to move forward. That said, this is, the proposed project would be the most significant renovation of this historic property in the heart of our downtown in over 35 years, and restoring this iconic building back to its use by the community, again, in the use by the community, again, in the heart of our downtown. There's many people who have memories of this property, and it, we could be returning to an experience that the community had with this property, or hasn't had for over 35 years. I'd like to turn things over to Sam Spirros, the project lead.
Before you leave, are there any questions for staff? Bill?
I just wanted to clarify, I know in the output, input-output model, you've mentioned off-site spending, but in any of the scenarios you developed as far as payback periods and things like that, we didn't assume any revenue from off-site spending. Is that correct?
No. So I just had, there's data available on hotel guest spending. And the out, the economic impact, sorry, economic impact model doesn't necessarily look at the development feasibility of a site. Kind of after the project is done, then what are the economic impacts? So, you know, I think, you know, subjectively, I think there, you know, typical ease for each of those scenarios, but it doesn't quite look at that part of it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves.
Sure. My name is Sam Spirros from Markson's Affiliates, and, yeah, I'll do the whole team. I'm here with Michael Blanken, Elliot Estes from Woodmont Lodging. Can everybody hear me okay? And Stephen Siegel from HCPM.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
So I just wanted to say a couple of quick things, and then open it up for any questions that anybody may have. Thank you for having us here tonight. We very much appreciate the opportunity. Brandon already introduced the team, and in addition to the gentleman up here, my partner Mike Orloff from the Shroud Group is here with us, as well as our architect K2M, and our management company, Kinset Hospitality. Urbana's an exciting city. We're happy to play a part in the revitalization of parts of the city. The hotel renovation can be a great catalyst to reactivating the Lincoln Square site. The hotel has some really phenomenal spaces that we hope to renovate, reactivate, and hopefully bring the community together in the hotel. And we're excited to work with the city, the mayor, and staff to help make this happen. So, I don't know if anybody has thoughts or questions, but-
All right. Anybody have questions for the developers? Jared?
I guess I'll start us off. So, we've often talked about risk, and risk is probably always the biggest thing folks are concerned about with the city, next to probably architecture, in the way things end up looking. But, in our discussions, we've come across a few different things that, you know, obviously you can't predict the future. There's no guarantees in anything. But I was wondering if you guys could talk a little bit about your side of where you see things on risk. I know where risk lies on our side, but I'd like to hear a little bit about your, your analysis of the risk into it, your commitment into the project, and where you see the strengths and weaknesses for yourselves as we go forward.
Okay. Well, I'll start off, and then the team will jump in. You know, this building, or portions of the building, date back to 1924. It's a very old building. It's a historic building. Renovating it's going to be very tricky, not only with respect to the historical aspects and keeping the historical elements of it, and working with the, the state and the federal agencies in order to make sure that we're doing the historic renovation appropriately is one component of it. We've been through the building many times, but the building is not open, and it doesn't reveal itself in terms of different things that could be going on behind the walls and with respect to renovating it. So, from our perspective, the biggest risks are trying to figure out what a realistic budget is in terms of renovating the hotel. And although we've been through the building and have a, hopefully a good handle on that, we have a fairly large contingency. But, you know, there are a lot of unknowns, and it's a pretty risky redevelopment. From the city's perspective, not to put myself in your shoes, but the city's risk is really, you know, to raise the money and float the bond is for a project that actually gets developed and is open. So at that point, you know, a lot of the risk in terms of renovating the property has already been, you know, diminished. And you have, fortunately for us and for you, the Hilton Hotel Brands willing to extend to us the Tapestry Brand, and Hilton's one of the leading hotel companies in the world. And having them on, being part of the project, I think minimizes the economic risk for a project that's open and operating. So I still think that the biggest risk is in the renovation side of things. I don't know if anybody else wants to-
Jared, do you have a follow-up?
Can I have a quick follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know we're in between this agreement happening and your actual purchase of the property itself is the final analysis of whether or not you're going to discover things that go outside your contingency, going to occur prior to the purchase of that property, or where you have to take possession of the property before you can actually get in and find those, those last, those last bits of unknowns?
The honest answer is going to be both. So we're going to continue to have part of our team come into the property and try and solidify elements of the project that we don't really have full answers on. And so we're going to investigate those over the next month, and try and get those ironed out so that we can sort of get a better handle on our contingencies. But having said that, once we go into renovations, and we're going to, we know we're going to discover things that we have no idea that we're going to discover. So it's going to be a little bit of both.
Hence the planned contingency.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll let other folks go. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Dennis?
Yeah. So we haven't had an operating hotel in our downtown for some time now. There is quite a lot of construction in our neighboring community, Champagne. Do you feel confident that you'll be able to bring to this hotel enough business to maintain a good, high level of occupancy during the run of the hotel?
That's a great question. I think the short answer is yes, but I'll give you a more complete answer. So, the part of the team that underwrites those sort of things and can do analysis and do star reports and can help figure out whether the market can support another hotel and what type of hotel. And so from an underwriting standpoint, I think there's enough business in the community and being close to the university that that will happen. But part of the benefit of partnering with the city is for us to take advantage of the city of Urbana, that I think has been drafting the development that's gone on in Champagne. And we're going to look forward to everybody in this room and everybody in the community to help make sure that the hotel is a success and really put a stamp on Urbana in terms of providing a full-service, quality product, hotel product in the marketplace.
And I would encourage you to reach out to community groups who in the past have used the hotel very happily. The ballroom is said by many people in the Contra Dance and other organizations to have the best dance floor in the community. And we would love to see activities and festivals held there and perhaps supported by the hotel itself as a sponsor in the future.
Yeah. We're looking forward to partnering with many people in the city to help reactivate those areas.
My last, my last comment, if I may, is one of the concerns is, of course, the extent to which the Tapestry Brand will require interior renovations and change. And certainly I have no problem or issue with upgrading the rooms, the rooms and the living quarters to the, the most highest and effective standards. But there is concern in the community about some of the historic items that are in the hotel. And you did mention in your prospectus that some of the things that would be modernized would include all-new furniture and all-new fixtures. And some of the fixtures are historic in nature, and some of the furniture maybe is kind of old and funky, but it does add a certain kind of class to the, at least to the lobby. So, probably my concerns as far as the interior are the ballroom and the lobby, and the, and the library, which is a unique space that's a little futzy, but might still be a unique place to, to run a business, a cafe. And the other one is the deteriorating exterior of the newer Jumer Wing, which is on the north side. And, you know, I would hope that you would consider renovating the exterior to better match the older Royer version, rather than to totally change the appearance and modernize it. Because it's, ultimately, if you take off the decorative elements, it becomes kind of a square box, which I would hate to see, you know, ended up being vinyl-sided. Okay?
No, I appreciate that. And I know Elliot will jump in in a second to sort of follow on, on my comments. But for the most part, when you're renovating a historic property, the state and the federal government are going to have a strong hand in terms of what we can and can't do in and out of the hotel. And in addition, the Hilton brand, if anybody's in this room has done a hotel by Hilton or Marriott, they have a very strong voice in terms of what goes on. So we're going to be constrained and benefited by the requirements that both the historic aspects of the renovation and the Hilton Tapestry Brand will place on the hotel. And so we probably don't have as great a license to do inside or outside renovations that you would think we would, and we're going to be fairly constrained by them. I don't know if I'm missing anything.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Great. Well, it certainly just keep us in touch as far as, as the plans evolve. We'd like to see that.
Of course.
Eric?
Is it the typical Hilton Tapestry model to renovate existing structures as opposed to engage in new construction?
The answer is yes. And the, the large hotel brands and some of the smaller ones as well have what's called soft brands. And so soft brands allow different iconic, historical or unique properties to be able to go under the umbrella of the hotel brand, but at the same time maintain their characteristics of those buildings. As opposed to, you know, hotel brand like Spring Hill Suites, or Home2, or the Hilton Garden Inn. Those are brands that have very, very specific criteria, and you can't really veer away from them. And those are mostly new-build products that all look the same. And as they renovate their specifications, then the new versions all look the same. But the soft brands like Hilton Tapestry are designed to help keep the elements of the existing properties.
Yeah. I've, I've been browsing through the Hilton Tapestry, and certainly, they all look different from each other, which I guess reflects the fact that they all started out with some distinctive characteristics that, that the brand built on.
Exactly.
All right. Any other questions? Jared?
Sure. I just had one quick follow-up on Dennis's comments. I know this is probably below your pay grade, and it's more a comment for our staff than it is for you guys. But I would strongly encourage you, should you find yourselves in the position of wanting to remove architectural elements and furniture currently in existence in the hotel, that you would consult with architectural salvage companies locally here. We've got a couple, one in particular that does a great job of removing and maintaining important architecture from this, from our community. So, I know that's probably below where, where you guys are at, and that'll be, end up on somebody else's plate. But please, don't just toss anything that may be, may be in there, because there are likely folks who would find value in those things and would remove them at no cost to you.
It's a good comment. We spend a lot of time in the weeds, so don't worry about it.
All right.
I did have one more, Mary Alice.
What? I have a question.
Okay, I'll follow up.
No, no. Go ahead, Jared.
I also wanted to ask about your guys' experience with other historic properties. I know you guys all provided a little bit, specifically with management from Woodmont, the gentleman from Woodmont. If you guys have experience in other restored historic hotels of this type or not. And if you do have that experience, what can you tell us about it?
Elliot Estes, we do. Michael and I, we had the opportunity to partner with another group, very similar to Sam and, we call him Orloff because there are two Michaels on the team. We came together to purchase a historic property in Charlottesville, Virginia, another college town. And it also had a deep history and tradition. And we were very light in our touch in the renovation there. But it did require a lot of work. And specifically, and I can get out of Stephen's way here to, to share, but when you're talking about the major systems in the building, and the unknowns that Sam referenced before, but the desire to preserve was a very special place to the community. We did that, and we did it in a very quick fashion in order to return the property to the community. It's a small property. It's 20 rooms, but we put almost $2 million into that property in about three to four months. And I'm sure if you guys peruse our website, you'd find it. But it's a project we're really proud of. And we were very purposeful in partnering with Stephen, who has very deep experience. Stephen worked with Michael and I in our prior stop, and it was really important to us that he be a part of this project. And I'd love, if you were able to share a project or two.
Thanks, Elliot. So we did, a couple of projects that we did, one was a, in Houston, Texas, was a 1929 building. It was an apartment building at that time, which we converted into a Spring Hill Suites. It was downtown Houston, Texas. It was actually part of three, it was actually the old Humble Building. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. And that's actually part of three different structures that were combined into one. We also did in San Francisco on Post Street. It was a 1929 build, 1928, I believe it was, with 166 keys, a room, sorry, on that project. And that was actually converted to a Marriott Courtyard.
All right. Those are your questions, Jared. Taking my place today. All right. I just have one really quick question, which is, how long do you have the hotel under contract for? When is that expiration?
October 31st.
Okay. All right. Excellent. All right. So if there are no other questions, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for coming out and for your interest. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get the discussion started, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we send ordinance number 2019-06-036, an ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Markson's Affiliates LLC for the Urbana Landmark Hotel Forward with a recommendation for approval.
I'd like to second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Discussion. Oh, I apologize. I don't have any public input cards for the hotel, but if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come up and speak? No? All right. Okay. So, discussion. Bill?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the staff for all the work you've done on this, and going through the various risk scenarios. I think you've done as much as possible, kind of looking at the potential downsides and trying to cover as much as possible, and kind of reaching our limit, I think, and what we're willing to do. Of course, we all, we also know that there's risk that could happen after it's opened, that, you know, it doesn't pan out as well, and may need to change ownership, and then we may need to do some renegotiation and all that. So we don't like to think about that. But that's probably a bigger risk is because we can't really predict that very well. So I appreciate looking at the predictable risk anyway.
I just want to say also, thanks to the staff for everything that you've done. But also, thanks for keeping us informed and keeping us involved, and so that we understand. I didn't have any questions, because all my questions have been answered before, you know, when I've talked to different staff members regarding it. And I really, I would also like to thank the, the developers that have shown up and shown such an interest in renovating that hotel, which most of us that are from this area can remember from childhood, all of us actually, I think, can remember from childhood of it being the place to go when we were younger. it being the place to go when we were younger. I've been to class reunions there, I've, I think my father even had been to class reunions there. But it's, thank you very much for your input and your interest. I really appreciate it, and I think we all do.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for doing such a thorough job of study and making the analyses that would be important for us to make a decision on this hotel. I do feel that the renovation of the hotel is very vital for the future of the downtown. It is one of the key elements that if initiated and brought to a successful conclusion, would truly be a turning point for this community, which has, I think, so much potential in so many other areas. And for this to occur would be really a great highlight to begin, I think, a new phase for our community. I'm very concerned about historic preservation, as you all know on the council. I appreciate the comments and the answers that you gave me about my concerns about the historic elements that might be at risk during the redevelopment. I like the idea that you would take a light touch, or at least a thoughtful touch. There's certainly things about the lobby I'd like to see changed, but there's a lot of old woodwork, and even a couple of really large pieces of furniture in the lobby that give it its character as well, and can certainly be mixed with more modern approaches for a kind of eclectic and interesting look for people. The, the future of the hotel, I think, is, has a lot of potential, and I, I don't know, we didn't ask really about the architect's concept of potential change, or to, to keep the current portage share. Some people have critiqued it kind of severely, it's a little bit oversized. I would hate to see a slant level aluminum roof be the alternative for the entry to the hotel, which we've heard suggested in the past. So to potentially turn a corner of the parking lot into a public plaza, or a green space, was also a consideration that has floated past us in the past. And I know that parking is a concern perhaps, we haven't really talked about the parking and the potential for spaces at the hotel. So these are things that maybe we could learn about in the future as we go along.
All right. Eric?
So I'll just join the, for the record, the general love and admiration that we're directing to staff. I just feel so very, very well briefed on this, in detail and in concept. And also, thank you to developers, I, first time I've seen you, but what I have been told by the staff is that you're, you're genuinely, all of, all of the negotiations were genuinely in the spirit of trying to make sure that everybody wins, and I really, really appreciate that.
All right. Diane?
I just want to assure Councilmember Roberts and everyone that the architect has just really been engaged, so they haven't made any decisions yet, although they'll get started fairly soon, but there will be no vinyl siding or aluminum slant roofs anywhere near that property. So just rest easy on that point. And probably not the white marble flooring either, so, but we'll see.
All right, is there any more discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward to City Council meeting next week. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2009. Oh, I thought we, we did do staff report. Do we still have a staff member who would like to come up?
No, this is for the resolution.
Oh, this is for the resolution, please join us. All right. All right, so Resolution Number 2019-06-025R, Resolution Relating to the Participation of Elected Officials in Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Todd?
Thank you, and good evening. The resolution before the committee certifies to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund that the mayor and city clerk hold positions that require the performance of a minimum of 1,000 hours of qualifying work each year. The IMRF Board Resolution 2017-02-13 requires public bodies who participate in the IMRF system to certify this information every two years. This year's certification must be completed and submitted by September 1st, 2019.
Questions for staff? All right, can I have a motion?
Odd move that we certify that the clerk and the mayor actually work at their jobs.
Are you willing to send it to council with a recommendation for approval?
I, I, I am moving to send this opinion to the council with a recommendation for approval.
I will second that.
All right, moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? That moves forward. Thank you very much. I did this a little out of order here, I apologize. So we have, the next item on our agenda is a discussion of consolidated social service subsipient agreements. I have two people, two members of the public who would like to speak, and I think we'll go ahead and do that first. Are there any, if there's anybody else who would like to speak for this discussion item, there are forms in the back, please fill those out. But otherwise, we will call up Lucia Maldonado.
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 Get it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Which one?
Either of them, just make sure your mic is on and it's close.
If the green light is on, that means that it's on.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Lucia Maldonado, and I just wanted to take a moment to show support for CU Fair. I sent an email, I believe, a couple of weeks ago to all of you, and I hope you received it. My first encounter with CU Fair was about three or four years ago, when they were collecting furniture for a refugee family that was being relocated to Urbana. I was impressed with the love and care that every one of the people involved displayed. Days before the family arrival, I stopped by the house the group was getting ready for them, and every volunteer there was invested on getting that house ready for the family. The list of items needed for the family included toys for the two little kids that, from the family, and I was able to donate some toys for them. As an immigrant myself, who arrived in this country with two children, with very few things, I know how important those little details are, having, including children not having any toys when they move here. The journey to relocate to a different country really breaks your heart in tiny little pieces. And it's so, being able to give the, these boys some toys, really gave me a sense of comfort, to know that they were gonna find them when they arrive to their new home. After that experience, working with other volunteers from CU Fair, I knew that CU Fair was going to be doing great things in our community, not only for refugees, but also for immigrant families, for unaccompanied minors, and for asylum seekers. The number of unaccompanied minors and asylum seekers from Guatemala and Honduras has been increased every year in Urbana and Champaign, and I'm sure you are aware of that. Due to my work with Urbana School District, I'm usually one of the first people to get in contact with new families in the area. We have also seen more and more people who are not new in the community coming into the schools looking for help. CU Fair has been providing direct assistance, one-on-one case management, and transportation to families and students. In the last weeks, they had also been providing food for families in need in Urbana. In the last three weeks before the school year ended, we got nine new students with their parents arriving here directly from Guatemala, in the last three weeks of school only, that in addition to all the other families that arrived here during the school year. It would be impossible for just one organization to do all this work. The fact that CU Fair will have office hours on evenings and Saturdays shows their commitment to adapt to services on, or under schedule to better serve the community. CU Fair is one of the organizations who's always willing to collaborate and complement our work in favor of families and children who need it the most. And those of us who actually work in the community and with the community know that they truly deserve all the help that they can get. So I thank you for considering supporting their work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have another person who would like to come up and speak about CU Fair. This is, I believe, Diane Orr, is that correct?
Yes. Thank you. Hi. Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I am Diane Orr from the organization Ben the Ark Jewish Action. I am here because I am also supporting CU Fair, but I need to say that there are several organizations in this community who provide support to immigrants and refugees, and I think that's an admirable thing, because we know that Urbana and Champaign are rich in immigrants and refugees, and that there is so much work to go around right now, that it would take double the number of organizations that we have, I think, to get it all accomplished. So I take my hat off to any organization who is willing to do the work. I've been a member of CU Fair since 2017, and I have watched it grow from two people into an organization that provides a variety of really critical services to our immigrants and refugees, refugee families from all over the world, not only from Central America, but from the Democratic Republic of Congo, and from the Middle Eastern countries of Syria and Afghanistan, where there is so much turmoil, that it is hardly possible to imagine what it would be like to be living in a place where there's a bomb dropping every two hours. So I, we heard Lucia talk about many of the, of the services that CU Fair provides, so I will just add on to her list. I know that CU Fair has been able to provide emergency funding for healthcare and funeral expenses for families in need. I know this because my organization has done the same. Lucia and I attended, not attended, visited the mother of a, of a 17-year-old who had taken his own life, because he, you found out that he was undocumented while his siblings were documented, and he was afraid that Immigration and Customs would come and take him from his family and send him away to a place that he didn't know. So anyone who is willing to do that work deserves some support to do it, I think. I know that CU Fair has been instrumental in organizing a free online store for immigrants and refugees to come and, and find things that they need, something as small as a toaster, or as big as a bed, or a refrigerator, is available at this store, and what a welcome, welcome place to have in our community. And I know that CU Fair does layperson casework for 37 families with 157 members right now. And it didn't matter where they started, and with which organization they started, if they need help, CU Fair is willing to help them, and is wanting to make sure that they are a self-sustaining family, a self-supporting, self-sustaining family, before they stop offering services. And I also know that CU Fair provides some very, very important work for undocumented and documented students in both of the school districts. I know that I worked personally with the founder, Luis Cusa, to make sure that some of the children from Guatemala would be enrolled in the Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club this summer, because if they weren't, they would be staying at home, perhaps with an older sibling, and not getting much stimulation in the language area, and it is so critical for children from other countries to keep practicing English over the summer after school ends. And I also know that CU Fair's model of advocacy and their model of outreach has brought the attention of immigrants and refugee families to the public in a, in a very, in a very compelling way. So, is that my time? Sorry! Okay, and that was the last thing I was going to say, so I support CU Fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any other members of the community that would like to speak? Would you mind coming up with your card? Thank you.
Yes. And I wouldn't disagree with the people who have just spoken about the good things that CU Fair does, but I guess I would like to speak as a taxpayer. And I worked for the Urbana School District for a long time, and one of my jobs was to write grants, the state grants, that was, you know, done on a head count, so that we were entitled to the money, and both, and competitive grants. And at first, I really railed against the fact that you had to be so specific about the criteria, until I realized that it was, it was the criteria that kept us all honest, that it was the criteria that said, that made sure that even the perception of favoritism didn't enter into how grants were awarded, or how they were administered. And I think that as I read the grants, and as I know the struggles of a new organization as CU Fair is, I don't think that CU Fair met that criteria. And therefore, I think it's not fair to other grantees, or people who were not awarded money, if somebody didn't, who didn't meet the criteria, got the money. I would, for next year, I would really support having a portion of the grant, the consolidated grant money, set aside for new organizations. And those organizations perhaps could have different criteria, and then be required to work with somebody within the city to make sure that they had all of the things in place that have to do with the money and the accounting and things like that. So I guess as a taxpayer, I think, I don't think that it's, it's bad to have criteria. I think that it's the criteria that keeps, that lets other taxpayers know that everything was done on the up and up. Not every taxpayer in the city of Urbana will agree that money should go to refugees instead of the courage connection. Not every taxpayer will agree that it should go to Don Moyer instead of the refugees. But it's very important that every taxpayer know that all the grants that were given, were given based on criteria, and they were the, the grants that were awarded, were awarded based on that criteria, and, and so I know I'm a bit, I can be a bit of an OCD- And, and so I know I'm a bit, I can be a bit of an OCD person, but I think it's important. I think it's the way that we, the taxpayers know how the money is spent. If I were Bill Gates and I decided to do a grant, and I thought, oh, this guy really, he didn't really meet all the criteria, but I'm going to give him some money anyway, and it's my money, fine, I don't care. But if it's somebody else's money, then I really have to follow the rules. And I guess that's what I'd like to say. I didn't think that all the criteria were met.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. We have another person, Ben Mueller, who would like to address the committee.
Good evening, I'm Ben Mueller, the president of CU Fair. I don't want to take a whole lot of time because I know that there's, it's just been a busy night, and a lot of important things have occurred. But just in response to Jennifer Hickson's comments, there in, in the requirement of the grant, there are, there are two statements. One is that the grant, from my understanding, is that the organization has undergone an audit. The second requirement, if that cannot be met, is that there's a CPA certification of the finances of the organization. And in the case of our organization, since we are a new organization, it is true that we have not undergone an audit, but we did provide a CPA certification. And I would just say that, at this point, there perhaps have been time, I know that we have, to keep our public scrutiny of how funds are used for an organization, but I would say that as a new organization who have, up to now, received private donations from mostly faith-based members, in our first year, we did not have an audit, but we have fulfilled the requirements of a grant, and we are now working with the CPA to be sure that if funds are given to us from public entities such as the city of Urbana, that we'll be able to meet those requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the community that would like to address the committee about the discussion agreement on Consolidated Social Service awards? Your name is James Kilgore, correct?
Correct.
You didn't put your name on here, sir. That's okay, I just wanted to attribute it correctly.
He's famous.
James Kilgore chooses not to address the members, but asks that his position be entered into the record. CU Fair is a much-needed organization in the community, please support their work. Thank you. All right, last call. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Discussion, I'll open the floor now for discussion. Jared.
Was our representative on the committee that brought forward these grants in light of our information currently, how do you see their application and our award to them?
So I, I would like to clarify the criteria for a moment. The criteria were used for a discussion. We did not add up the scores, so we independently all looked at the criteria, and we all looked at the applications, we filled out our forms, and then we came and we had a conversation. In that conversation, we basically talked about the people that we thought deserved further conversation with the committee, but as I said, the people who were top scorers weren't guaranteed funding. It was more about the conversation. There were six, I believe, six members of the committee, is that right? And we had, we had a pile of people who we said were unsure of, and we had a pile of people who we said were pretty sure we're going to fund these people. I can't remember which ones CU Fair fell into, and which one of those, but we certainly had a conversation. There were, I believe, three different items that they had asked for. Transportation was one, there was another one that I can't remember off the top of my head, and then there was the vol, I'm sorry?
A resource guide.
Resource guide, thank you. There was a resource guide, there was transportation, and then there was a volunteer coordinator. And I believe the committee felt that, at the time, that it was, CU Fair had grown to a point in which they would be, it would serve them well to have an actual paid coordinator to be able to coordinate all of the volunteers. That was the conversation that we had during the committee meetings. All right, Bill?
I guess for discussion, I'll try to put some numbers on this. I'd be in favor of supporting, I think, the mayor's new recommendation, which was to make the CU Fair contribution seven thousand five hundred dollars, and change the ESRMAC contribution from five thousand to seven thousand five hundred dollars, making that the same, and then adding five thousand dollars for Youth Assessment Center. And I'd just say, I know CU Fair, I'm familiar with their work, they've really grown quickly in the last couple of years, they have a huge volunteer base, and they're experiencing some growing pains, I think there's probably some administrative stuff that needs to be done that hasn't been done, and that's why they need the help, that's why they, they need the funding. And we've, we've funded beginning organizations before, like first followers that didn't have much experience, and there's, there's always some opportunity to fund groups starting up, I think, especially when they're showing promise like that. I know, I see the emails and outreach to people when they, when you need somebody to drive somebody to Chicago, and you get volunteers right away, stuff like that, and that's a need that definitely is being met by CU Fair, as well as helping to organize the other groups that are there at CU Public Health and run the store and everything. I'm also real glad to hear that you're doing the food project. I know I've done some work with CU Public Health, we were looking at where are the foods available, the lunch programs, the summer lunch programs for the kids, and especially in the, the areas where we know we have immigrant populations that are not necessarily in the city of Urbana, so maybe if, you know, when we ask that question, how many of your clients are in the city, a lot of our needs, our social needs, are in the school district but on the edge of the city, and they're, for all practical purposes, they're residents of Urbana, they, they shop in Urbana and deserve our support, but half of the mobile homes in Champaign County are on the outskirts of Urbana in the Urbana School District. So we have a lot of affordable housing that appeals to the immigrant population, and there's no summer food programs in that area, in distribution sites, so I'm glad that you guys are getting into that and helping fill that need.
Diane?
I will speak to, to my, I have comments and concerns. I, I had originally had, I still have concerns about the, I guess I would call it incomplete financial information on the application from CU Fair, and, and some numbers don't add up in terms of, from one part of the application, it talks about how many, what percentage of their clients are from Urbana, but then the numbers don't jive with what, with what's actually stated in another part of the application. And I was also very concerned about the fact that the Youth Assessment Center had not been recommended for funding at all. I really believe Urbana has to continue support for this, to demonstrate its support. It plays a very important role in keeping young kids, teenagers, out of the criminal justice system, and they provide a lot of services. And in fact, Jonathan Westfield of YAC just announced that they've got an agreement now with District 116 Schools, where they can actually go into the schools and provide services to the families in the schools, rather than expect the families to come to Champaign for, for resources and services. So I think that will help stabilize the situation in our schools and get services and resources to the families and kids where they need it. So I had, I also appreciate meeting with representatives from CU Fair on Friday, Ben Mueller, is it Miller or Mueller? Miller, Miller. Ben Mueller, and Tracy Satterthwaite, and Julie Pride came to see me, and we met for about an hour, and they provided a lot more detail about what the organization does, and frankly, about what the need is overall in the community. And not only do we have five or six different groups now serving immigrants and refugees in various capacities, but we also have a number of activities centered around providing food and medical services and dental services, and all of which are critical needs for this population. So I'm really, really happy to see that the Public Health District is stepping up to try to coordinate some of these, or many of these activities in one place, it's sort of one-stop shopping for people, and that will make a very big difference in being effective. So CU Fair is an emerging organization, while the financial information wasn't as robust as it should have been, one of our criteria also stated that we support emerging organizations, so we also need to kind of tighten up, you know, we've come a long way in tightening up this grant criteria, we still have some ways to go. I like the idea of having, not to make things more complicated, but having two categories, one for new organizations versus one for established organizations who really know what they're doing and have systems in place. So I, as Bill said, I do support seed, I would call it seed grant funding of seventy-five hundred for CU Fair. I really want to fund YAC at the, at the level of five thousand dollars. They requested ten, and then increase the funding for ESRMAC to seventy-five hundred. They had requested just eight thousand dollars. So all of those organizations do really wonderful work in our community, and of course, the need was far greater than we had the funds to provide. But anyway, I appreciate the education I got from all of the community, especially CU Fair and others, and hopefully, this will be a way to get you started, and we can, you know, continue to support you in different ways as well. And I appreciate the work you're doing, and, and it's true, the, the places like Ivanhoe Estates and the other mobile home parks are where the need is huge, and those are in the county, but they are in our school system, so we've got a lot of work to do.
Sure, you were looking like you wanted to say something?
I guess, I guess the question I have right now is, is are we only discussing the CU Fair and, and are, can we discuss anyone that we feel?
The discussion topic is all, all of.
Okay, so, okay, because then my question would be regarding the STEP TRUCE program that Courtney Carruthers is trying to also get off its feet. I would like to see him, I would like to see that particular organization, in particularly because they're working with at-risk children, and I would like to see that get a financial, that organization get a financial bump, if at all possible. They've just only started maybe about six months ago, maybe, maybe that, maybe, I think it's more like five, but he, his organization, that particular organization, which, which works really diligently in the, in, in the neighborhood to help children who are at risk and have not, and have particular behavioral problems, issues, to bring them into a more mainstream educational, academic type of, of environment and atmosphere. And I think that it's important that we try to encourage that type of philanthropy, so to speak, coming from the city to, to, for those, those types of organizations, or that type of organization as well.
So, just to clarify, is your proposal to fund both, because they are separate? STEP and TRUCE were, they were one application, but they're two different programs?
Well, I know, I know they're two different programs, but they're working.
Together.
They're working together. So that, that is, I think, why they actually, it's always been described to me as like STEP slash TRUCE, because of the Restorative Justice Program, which is TRUCE, the STEP program, which is parenting classes and tutoring and so forth, which they work together. They work.
They do, they work together, they're two different programs. I just pulled up their application, so STEP specifically asked for five thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. I'm not sure where the ninety comes from, but it's there.
Even if it's not five thousand two hundred and ninety, if it's fifteen hundred, if it's, you know, thirteen hundred, something that would be, that would help with materials, because right now Reverend Carruthers is running this program out of his church, and with the donations from people in, in the church.
Sure.
But he's, he's, he's trying, he's, you know, running the tutor, the tutorials and all that stuff are being run, you know, on his dime, so to speak.
No, and I, I completely understand, I just, I just want to let the council know, because I'm reading off of their narrative, right? So their narrative says, "Funding will allow better advertising and tracking of data, in addition to providing increased resources to families and parents." So they, those are their, their items that they want, they had applied for, for the money, is to track information, to advertise, and I'm not sure what, providing increased resources to families and parents, maybe that's food or something else.
Well, yeah, I think part of it is also in, materials that they need, because he also helps with parenting, I think it's, I think it means that kind of material. He also tries to, to help with, in that, in that, in that way as well. So it's, he's not just dealing with the children, he's dealing with their parents as well.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, just to summarize, if I can, right now, we have a proposal from Diane for three different funding pieces, for CU Fair, for YAC, and for East Central Illinois Refugee Assistance. You also, Bill, had mentioned, did you mention all three or just the first one?
Yeah, I mentioned those three, just to get some numbers on the table.
And then, do you have a number that you want to recommend, Sherry?
An amount?
An amount? I'm just trying to put all of this down.
Well, I, I got the, I got the impression from the, from our previous discussions that one of the main reasons why it was not, he was not, that his program or his organization was not considered was because he wanted, like, full funding of the whole thing. But he and I have had some discussions regarding, like, fundraising activities or anything, stuff like that, so I was hoping that if not five thousand, twenty-five hundred.
Okay, so your, your suggestion is twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
All right. Eric?
Yeah, I would just note that even if we give twenty-five hundred there, we're still substantially within our intention for the entire year, and we still have the ability to, you know, respond to some short-term emergency during the year, as, as, you know, Danielle had, had suggested, this would cut into that a little bit, but I would like us to seriously consider supporting that.
All right, I'm kind of keeping a run in total here, so so far, we're actually spending more than twenty-five, the suggestion is, is that we spend more than twenty-five hundred dollars than we originally anticipated, which was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So we're, I'm just letting everybody know, even though we're adding seventy-five hundred, five thousand, et cetera, we're only at plus twenty-five hundred right now. Bill?
Yeah, I was kind of going to point out the same thing, that the three figures that I mentioned wouldn't change the total because of reallocations. Yeah, I, I like the TRUCE program, I thought the people that came and talked to us about that were very impressive. I know they have some funding, quite a bit of funding from the National Health Board. Sometimes you feel like what we contribute is just kind of a drop in the bucket, but, you know, I think our contribution at least sends a message that we appreciate their work and encourage them to reapply again next year.
Yeah, Josh works very diligently with, with young, in particular, young, young, young black men, I guess, I should say children, I guess, because that's what they are, to put them on a different path, and, and to advocate for them when, when trouble comes up, and to try to realign them back into where they, what path they should be on. It's not, it's not an easy job to do, but he, he is an excellent advocate for, for young children, for children that are, are having difficulties. So, and I think that if, the more that we do that, we're all, we're constantly talking about the violence in the city, and gun violence, and so on and so forth, but the fact of the matter is that in this, in this city, young black men are the most targeted for that type of lifestyle. And if you have, if you have a, an organization that is willing to work with that population, and try to, trying to help them, guide them into to help them, guide them into living in a different way, showing them a new normal, let me just put it that way, just showing them a new normal. I think it's very important that that be encouraged in any way that we can do that. And one way, if we can do it one way financially, then I think that, that should happen. If finance, if finances is one way that can be done, to help bring people to, to understand that the civil, when we talk about civilization, and use that root word there, civil, some, you know, everyone's normal is different. And sometimes we have to let people know, there is another normal, another way of dealing with, with your anger, or another way of dealing with your circumstances. And that's what TRUCE does. TRUCE helps with that. So, and Brother Carruthers group, his STEP, his STEP program helps, works in concert with it in the sense that he, I can't come up with the words. I hadn't expected to say anything. But that, that program helps, helps to actually confirm everything that TRUCE, you know, whatever TRUCE does.
Yeah, have to reinforce that with the parents.
It reinforces it, yes. That's the word I was looking for.
Okay, good. I guess just a couple of technical questions then, as far as, I think we under-allocated by about 13,000, thinking we were going to apply that in some sort of emergency situations, but we didn't really define those. And then, was there also a minimum that we had set as far as what the bottom, the least amount that's still worth processing and doing the grant paperwork and everything for?
The minimum amount was 4,000. We prefer 5,000 is what the application said, but if we funded it 75%, that would be 4,000.
So I'd suggest 4,000 for the TRUCE program then? And then that would leave only 9,000, I guess, for emergencies then?
Let me, let me just clarify here. So we've been talking about, there actually are two funding proposals here, STEP and TRUCE.
Yeah.
So Sherry's had said 2,500 for STEP, but since they are under the same umbrella in this application, if we did 4,000, we're 1,500, we go to TRUCE, and 2,500, would that work, Sheila?
I guess, it wouldn't fit the minimum, though. If you're just going to administer one program, you just want it to be one. If they're mixing their funds, then they can.
Right, and the reason that there was just one application was that we encouraged applicants to provide one application, but there could be multiple programs. Yes, Diane?
I would point out, the Mental Health Board will match funds up to $25,000 if, so a $4,000 donation to TRUCE will be matched by the Mental Health Board with another four. They were given a base grant, I understand, of $50,000, and then told and challenged to find local match for another 25, so.
All right. Dennis?
And could you, could you remind me what our allocation is for the Neighborhood Connection Center with Janice Mitchell's programs? It seems like I remember she asked for two different things, and I think we are funding one, is that correct? And I can't remember which one is which.
Sheila, maybe you can help me with this. I reread this application before I came today, and she asked for one amount, but she had two programs in there. And so that was confusing to me. We had, we had suggested a funding of 17,000 is what we had suggested, and they had requested 17,000.
Okay.
Right.
So does that mean that both of her programs were included in that amount then?
It's difficult to tell because she applied for a community study center and a youth development program. And the youth development program is what showed up on the staffing recommendation, although she didn't provide a budget. And that was the one that we asked for council to make an exception, because that is the only agency that completely serves Urbana residents only.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, she did come in and express a desire to have the other grant also supported, so I don't know if this is a case where we can split that allocation or not.
You mean split the 17,000 to two programs?
Yeah, two of her programs.
I think we should probably check with Janice and just see which one best meets her needs, because she may be using this money for leveraging other resources, and I don't want to cut it and damage anything. But, you know, we could talk to her about the flexibility of giving her 17, and then what's the best way she wants to use it.
Okay, so if she has the ability to direct it in a way that is most beneficial to that center, that's appropriate, and I would support that. I just don't know if we have to be very strict about our allocations and how it goes and how it's then evaluated at the end.
Right, with this one in particular, we ask for council exceptions, so I think that it's fine for you to say, we'll meet with Janice and see what best meets her needs of those two programs, whether it's a split or whether it's funding all one or funding all another. I wouldn't be comfortable adding something in that none of us have seen, but I think talking to her further.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. I think we should pursue that then.
All right, any other discussion? So next steps, we have, we have a little bit of a question mark here between STEP and TRUCE. I know that Diane, you had suggested that this go back to committee for, or since, I don't, yeah, I was going to say, that seems to be pretty consistent here. The, the big question is, is the STEP and TRUCE, is that 4,000 as a joint program? Is it 2,500 only for STEP? That's the one that I'm still a little fuzzy on. I just want to make sure that we have clear directions to staff. Jared?
With them receiving the grant, I think, a matching grant, 4,000 would be great, and you could award it to either program because they'll be able to match it and apply it to the other program.
I don't think that's.
It's for TRUCE.
Yeah, it's only for TRUCE.
Oh, it's only for TRUCE.
So if, so if we give TRUCE $4,000.
STEP doesn't get anything.
STEP doesn't get anything.
Correct, because they're separate.
So that it should be two to each, I would say.
But then we have, I mean, we don't have to stick with the minimum of 4,000, right? I mean, we had said that we only wanted people to apply for no less than 4,000, but that didn't mean that we had to absolutely award 4,000. So if there was, I think part of the issue was the distribution of the funds, so maybe a one-time lump sum of X number of dollars would be easier for grants to handle. I'm looking at you for confirmation here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to.
And part of the concern too was it's a lot of staff oversight and monitoring, and so, you know, when you look at a $1,500 grant, that's probably the amount of staff time we have put into this process.
Okay.
Let alone the ongoing monitoring. So, you know, I, $1,500, is that going to make a big difference to him, or would 2,500 or 4,000 be better?
At this point in time with Brother Carruthers, I think, I think $1,500 would be very helpful for his program.
You know, and as Eric pointed out.
If you could give more, I'm not going to, I would, I would bet that he would not turn it down.
Well, and as Councilman Jacobson pointed out, the total budget was 225,000.
Right.
And Township has set aside an additional 25,000 for those rapid response projects that may come up during the year. I think last year, we had some issues with Courage Connection, and, you know, there was a group of, of community leaders coming together to try to solve that. So while our recommendation is 212, I think we do have a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, well, if, if there is a way that, I don't know that if or, regarding the matching funds, is it with the mental, with TRUCE, do they, does it have to be $4,000, or it can be any amount, and they will match it?
As far as I know.
Okay, so you know more than I do.
Jared?
I was just going to say, Phil, if they are going to ask for the minimum, that at the very least, you should ask Brother Carruthers to come to Danielle and demonstrate the urgency of the program for those, for those funds.
Okay, for.
As they've been asked for.
So I haven't, I haven't talked with him regarding the funds individually. I missed, I actually missed a text from him this evening.
Well, you should let him know, as we would let any organization know, that we do have those emergency funds set aside, and that they, if, as you have narrated for him, that there is the urgency and there is an immediate need for the use of that, he should go to Danielle to make, make his case.
Jared?
I do think we should stick with our minimum of 4,000.
Okay, so I just want to say that it's not Danielle who decides the social services, it's the city. It's a joint program.
I understand.
So I think that if we're going to have somebody, I think that it would be good to have Sheila and Danielle there, just kind of as representatives from her side.
I assume those things would work themselves out, not that Danielle would decide that by herself. But I, I would not be comfortable funding under 4,000. I think we should stick to our minimum.
Okay, well, let's stick to the minimum, and just let's say 4,000, or let's say more than 4,000. That's the minimum, right? Or let's say 5,000. It doesn't have to be 5,000, $90, is that what he originally asked?
5,000, 290, something like that, yeah, yeah. Eric, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that we're within our domain of responsibility to make a decision to give something to this organization tonight. Since it's going to be eligible for a match, I would even be comfortable doing the 2,000. I would be comfortable doing the 4,000. So whoever moves one or the other of those, I'll be, I'll be glad to support that. I'm being a little wishy-washy, but I think they have come to us. They have made a very impressive actual, actually, they've, they've talked to us very impressively in public in addition to submitting their proposal. And, and I think the work they're doing is important, and I think we should definitely allot them something tonight.
Mayor, did you have a comment? No, okay. Jared?
Just for the record, we won't be allotting anything tonight because we're just discussing.
Correct.
Correct, right. Oh, I've got, I was drunk with power that I didn't have.
All right, so I'm getting direction from staff that we need to give staff direction. So in front of you, we have the council, Sheila gave this to me today, so I had this printed out for you. If there is a certain amount that you think that we should change, please write that in, and let's give those to Sheila, and maybe you can aggregate that and see where the consensus is. So I will summarize one more time. I apologize if you already have this memorized. A is to change CU Fair to 7,500. B is to add Youth Assessment Center at 5,000. C is to give 2,500 to East Central Illinois Refugee Association. And D, which is more complicated, is the STEP and the TRUCE program. So the TRUCE program, a lot of people have been floating around 4,000. STEP has been anywhere from 1,500 to 5,000. So please go ahead and put your items in here. I would ask that Sheila, if I can so do so, that you aggregate this and send it out to council sometime at the end of the week. Would that be doable?
Sure.
Okay. And, you know, you guys aren't going to cheat, but go ahead and put your name on top. Diane?
Just wanted to clarify, ESRMAC is for a total of 7,500. It's actually getting an additional 2,500.
Gotcha, thank you very much. Okay, so it's an additional 2,500. I.
What are the others? I was looking for.
So CU Fair, 7,500, YAC, 5,000, which is new. YAC is new. East Central Illinois Refugee Assistance Center, which is a plus 2,500. And then what you're proposing for STEP and TRUCE separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to, if, if, if there has to be a, they have to receive the money separately, Sheila? Okay, so if I, if, if that's the case, then I would ask for $3,000 for STEP and $3,000 for TRUCE, just to.
Okay, go ahead.
Put a, just to put a figure in there.
Yeah, put it on your sheet.
Awesome.
Well, you said it has to be a minimum of four, right?
No, it doesn't.
No.
That was our, that was our guideline.
Okay.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be a minimum of four. Okay, keeping in mind that we have already allocated 2,000, sorry, $212,000, so we want to keep in that $225,000. So don't give somebody $20,000, because that's not going to work.
No.
All right. The other thing, just from a personal perspective in terms of how this committee worked, I think it would be beneficial for the city council, maybe in February of next year, to have a conversation about what council would like to see these funds spent on. I think it would be good guiding principles for the committee. For example, if we want to look at helping youth programs, if we want to invest money in workforce development, whatever that may be, I would like to have a conversation at a committee meeting in February to help guide the whole process. I think that would be beneficial. So that would be my recommendation, based on my participation in that committee. Is there any other conversation that, Eric?
Yeah, very quickly, I think it would be very good, the next cycle, if those agencies that are working to support immigrants and refugees would, if, when one looks at those three proposals, assuming that we get three again next year, that it's very clear which agency is doing what, and that the agencies have come to mutual agreements as to how they will either work together or what are their individual roles. That was absolutely, I mean, the other issue with CU Fair, which we haven't discussed tonight, is that that really wasn't clear.
All right, I'm happy to send out the application that TRUCE and STEP wrote, if people want to look at that before allocating their proposed money. Anybody want that? You should have it on a CD. I don't have a CD player anymore. Okay, all right. Okay, well, no further business in front of this committee. It is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.